Yeah, so the chief's copy on the back?
Yeah.
Oh, they're not crazy. They used to just let it go.
Oh, no, wait, yes, I have it.
There was no clock.
I just haven't read it.
Right. That's a best interest.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, February 28th. And with that, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here, thank you. Everyone is here this evening. So with that, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Then we will move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And is there anyone wishing to make any changes to the minutes? Any questions on the minutes? No, seeing none. Then I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on the minutes? In the audience? I'm seeing heads shaking. No, okay. Kevin, are there anyone on Zoom that would like to comment? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon.
Oh. It went.
Okay, one moment.
Is it okay now? Okay, thank you, everyone. Sorry, we had a little bit of a technical glitch. So we are now moving to public comment from our Zoom attendees. So take it away, Kevin.
All right, we'll try this again. If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. Then I would be looking for a motion on item number four of the minutes for February 14th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 14th.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Then we will move on to announcements. So first is meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believes are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code, which is 94931, to 888777. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So with that, we will move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Okay, so with that, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. We'll go to Zoom first.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Thank you, yes. First, I'd just like to mention I had a great deal of difficulty getting into the Zoom meeting, and it said that the link in the agenda had expired. I'm not sure what that means, but I tried another way and eventually got in after the third attempt. I just wanted to, I submitted an email this afternoon, I'm sorry it was so late, with comments on Agenda Item 8C, which is on the consent calendar. I don't know if that means it needs to be pulled or whether I can just vague the statement and whether I should do that now or later. The two points were that the project isn't complete.
Jenny?
Yes.
Excuse me, sorry. We're on, right now, we're on approval of the final agenda. So can we ask you to put your hand back up when we get to the citizens' business and consent calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, of course.
Yeah.
I thought that's where we were. Thank you.
And we had a little bit of a glitch also, so we got kicked out. So glad you were able to get back in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments on the final agenda? Well, have you? Hearing none? No other hands? Okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak on the final agenda? Nope, okay. So then I will bring this back, and we will move on to the next item, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So I will open up for public comment and comments on the consent calendar, and I'll start here. Would you like to speak on?
Well, if you would like to speak, you could come up to the podium. You were happy to show us. We're more than happy to.
Okay, all right, thank you. Kevin, do you want to see if anyone on Zoom would like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Once again, please use the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Jenny Blaker, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I submitted an email this afternoon, I'm sorry it was so late, commenting on Agenda Item 8C on the Wayfinding signage project. And I just wanted to point out that it's not absolutely complete because, at least as of this morning, the sign at Pocket Park is still the wrong way around, upside down, sort of sending people north instead of south and instead of vice versa. And so that's one small thing that the signs, the signs were, many of the signs were installed the wrong way around, and most of them have been corrected, and that's one I know of that still hasn't been. And then I was wanting to just comment and put in a little bit of the history of what happened, as far as I know, in discussions about the content for the signs. And in July 2021, it was agreed that this would come back for more discussion. And now you're being asked to approve this project with, as I understand it, no further discussion on the content, which has not yet been agreed. And there's a sentence in the staff report just saying that the interpretive panels have not yet been finalized and installed due to lack of response from the Federated Indians of Great and Rancharia. And I wanted to point out that in July 2021, we were nearly, nearly there. We were just, a few of us, including Marie McNorton and myself, were saying, can we please just ask the Federated Indians of Great and Rancharia or some other local indigenous representatives about that, for their comments on some of the input on indigenous history in the area? And also, I was urging that the Laguna Foundation be approached for their input. I don't know what happened. I do know that Marie McNorton had suggested some other local indigenous people to speak to as well as the Federated Indians of Great and Rancharia provided the contact information. So I'm not sure what happened, and I'm not really, I'm not really speaking up to complain so much as to say, how could this be done more efficiently in the future? And also, I just wanted to point out that although, of course, it was a much smaller project, the three Kattati Prequitas interpretive signs took a few months to complete for a total of $15,000 with a lot of community input. And obviously, the city couldn't do it that way, but I'm still hoping that in future we could focus more on local community input, local expertise, and local production. Thank you. And thank you to everyone who puts so much work into this project. I realize that John Paul Harris and other staff members have put huge amount of work into this project, and I really like the signs and the maps and appreciate the opportunities that did come up for public comment. And I'm sorry it's taken so long and got so bogged down, partly because we were trying to make sure that the information on the signs was correct. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, I will bring it back, and.
Yes.
Point of, point of privilege, it does appear that the Zoom link on the agenda is incorrect and doesn't match the Zoom webinar ID, which is why people are getting Zoom link expired on the agenda packet. So I don't know, would it be possible for us to read out the webinar ID and password so that people who have their Zoom client up can at least type in the ID if they would like to join the Zoom meeting?
Kevin, is that something that would be possible for you to do? That was probably why I couldn't get in either.
Yeah.
Because it. Bear with us a second, we're trying to be able to give that information out to those.
So while we're waiting for that, I just want to tell you guys, I think your club is awesome.
Thank you.
So the webinar ID that we're pulling off of Zoom is the same one that's on the front of the agenda? The 83077162905?
Correct, but the link just above it is 818301.
Oh. Okay, yeah, apologies about that. The, anyone that's looking to join the Zoom meeting should be able to join using the webinar ID and passcode. Those are up to date. So if you go to zoom.us and click "Join a Meeting" and enter the webinar ID and passcode, I'll read them out now. The webinar ID is 83077162905, and the passcode is 387305. I'll also point out that on the web agenda and on the agenda packet, if you use the link that is under "Call to Order" instead of the one on the front of the agenda under item one, that link is correct.
Thank you for that. Okay, so hopefully that will help some folks that may want to join. So with that, we are at the, let's see, first of all, Damian, would you like to speak to the completeness of, of the project for the signs? It's the contractor part of the signs that's trying to be completed, correct? Not necessarily the signs themselves? I understand that when the signs are complete, that Public Works will install those. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, so basically, just to keep it brief, at this point at least, we, Public Works will put the sign on the other side of the kiosk, which is what was requested in that one final location. And the item before you tonight is just closing out the contractor's work, which is done. So the interpretive panel is something different that we're handling internally, and Public Works can install them when they're complete.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And also that I know that you're still working with FIGR to get finalization there, and yes, they're hard to tie down. But I do know you're working on that.
Yeah, and I will actually point out one other thing on a different, different consent calendar item. There was an update that went out on, on item 8B for the car show fundraiser. That was just an oversight in the policy that actually allows the first year and these multi-year events to be without any fees. So that correction was made in the update.
Thank you for making that correction. They were very quick to make that correction because of our policy, as we discussed before. So with that, we have, does anyone want to pull any of these items, A, B, and C?
Yes, I want to pull C.
Okay. So then we have left on the consent calendar, A and B. So I would, we've taken public comment. I would be looking for a motion on A and B.
Move to approve consent calendar items, A and B.
I'd like to second that.
The motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Not seeing any, so A and B pass unanimously. And then we will move to item C, and Damian?
Yeah, would you like a staff report or just is there a specific question you want answers to?
Yeah, so one, one question I have, I understand it's just for the contractor and not the entire project, but what is still outstanding, like, is all that's left to install? Like, it's my understanding that the, it's the text that's in question and needs to be confirmed, so have the panels been made yet? Or what the contractor's meant to do?
We, we put a, we put a blank panel up, essentially. It says the City of Kattati marketing logo on it, and that's just a, just as a, because they're enamel and they're easier to clean when they get graffitied, the wood structure was getting tagged and it's hard to, it damages the structure. So we put a blank panel essentially up, waiting for the final content on the actual interpretive panel.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is the contractor the one who's going to create the final panel?
The city will.
The city, so the city's going to do all of the edits and they'll create the thing that will be installed by Public Works?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a graphics file, and then it gets printed on a piece of enamel, and then we just bolt it up, replace the one that's there with a new one. It's pretty quick.
Okay, so what was the contractors, what did the contractor do then?
The contractor built the kiosk structures and he did the other panels as well, and the lighting and all the things that go along with it. But that's all done. It's just literally this one panel that we need to finish.
Okay, and did the original contract include that panel that they're not doing now?
It did, but we replaced it with the blank panel, which is essentially the same cost.
So they put up a blank panel for us until we're done with the permanent one? So they did put up a panel, it's just only has the logo on it.
Right, I understand that, but we're still going to have to pay to get everything printed and put up there later, correct?
But they, it wasn't their responsibility to print it, was our responsibility to get it printed.
Oh, okay, so the printing wasn't part of the contract?
Well, it would be, I mean, if, if we'd had the artwork finished in the time, if it was done on time, then we could have given it to the contractor and they could have put it up. But it's just lagging in time, so we seem to get this contract done, because they're done with everything else, and so it's, we can't just hang on to them for an indeterminate amount of time.
And just to Jenny's comment about the other native folks and contacts, do you know if, if anyone reached out to any of them for approval?
I don't know. I know we've reached out to the tribe several times, and I can tell you, and this goes beyond this project too, just in general, we've been trying to establish some, some better communication paths with them so that we can just, because whether it's this or housing, or there's a lot of different, or other Public Works projects, there's lots of reasons why we need to work with the tribe. And so we definitely want to create mechanisms so that we can interact and work with them in a more efficient manner. There's just been a lot of change lately, especially in state law, and suddenly all the, and it's not just our tribe here, but the tribes statewide are now suddenly responsible for reviewing a lot of stuff that they weren't just a couple of years ago. And so I think they're overwhelmed with the amount of work they have, which is understandable, but we're, we're in the process of trying to figure out how we can better work and facilitate that conversation with them. So that's generally what's going on, and this is just sort of a little microcosm of that bigger conversation we're having.
Right, so, so did someone reach out to the other people she suggested, or only to the Great Rancharia?
I don't know, I mean, Noah can speak.
So, yeah, so the council directed staff to engage with the, the Great Rancharia tribe. I don't believe these other folks' names or contact information have ever been provided to staff, and I'm not aware if they were provided to the city council.
Okay.
So I would say if the council sees these folks' expertise level as adequate to suffice for engaging with rather than the tribe, staff could do that. But we have no knowledge of who those folks are or their contact information.
And, and I will say that part of, part of our conversation with the tribe and generally working better together, you know, more, in a more timely way, is to get that kind of information from them. Do you have trusted contacts outside of U2 that are the primary points of contact? So do you have trusted contacts that we could work with that could represent the tribe's interests? That maybe have the bandwidth to work for, work with us on questions we have? But that's where it is right now.
Does that answer your question, Kay?
Yeah.
Ben?
Sorry, I realize, what I need to say is comment, so I can work to let the public comment.
Okay.
No, I was just going to kind of just mention that we are on Feder, the Federated Indian Great Rancharia area, so I don't think that we can go to any other tribe to ask for, for, you know, verification of the information. So I just wanted to kind of just mention that. And also, the commenter Jenny Blaker had mentioned that some of the signs are kind of switched around and they're, and they're in the wrong location. Is that something the contractor does, or does the city have the ability to make those corrections?
We can easily do. You just unbolt them and then reattach it to their side of the structure.
Okay.
It was just about the, where the sign is and which walking direction you're going. There was differing, I guess, different opinion on what would work better from the average pedestrian's perspective. And so we, and we agree, so we, we just put them from this, on this side of the kiosk to that side.
Okay.
Vice versa.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions? All right, and I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on? Anyone wishing to speak on acceptance of the Wayfinding signage project, Phase 2? Seeing no one rise in the audience, I guess we can open it up for public comment again.
Thank you. Mayor Harvey speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Ben, did you have comments?
Sure, Hefememalima's pretty much covered what I was going to say, is we can't just go to individual Native Americans and, and the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia are the organized body of Native Americans in our area, and we need to work through them. So I'm not, that's not actually relevant to the item before us, but I think it's important in how we approach working with Native Americans in the area.
Probably good for us to strengthen that relationship with them.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I wasn't suggesting any Native person. I was suggesting the experts that Marie McNauton was suggesting, that I presume would have been already approved by the Federated tribe. So I'm not suggesting you can just talk to anyone. I just want to clarify that. They were the ones that Marie had already worked with. For, she's been doing a lot of Native research of people in the area, Coast Miwok and Southern Pomo, so I know that, you know, she had done research that they weren't just anybody. But I am not saying that I disagree that we should have better relations. I want to have better relations with the Federated tribe as well.
Okay, so would we wish that staff continue moving down that path to get the Federated Great Rancharia? Or do you want staff to reach out to see if these others are able to speak on their behalf? Because that was the suggestion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just say that whether it's someone from, whether it's someone that Marie refers us to or not, we would still be talking to the tribes.
Correct.
To make sure that whoever it is, whether it's someone that Marie knows or somebody else, that it's someone that has our blessing to speak on their behalf.
Right, so we would still have to circle back with them and say, is this person okay to represent you? So, but I heard staff offered to be willing to do that if that is our desire, or just continue down that path. So I'm not hearing any comments from anyone on that. Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion on this item?
I'm happy to move a resolution accepting the Wayfinding signage Phase 2 kiosks, project improvements, authorizing the city clerk to file a notice of completion with the county clerk, and authorizing the release of retention after the 35-day noticing period with no protests.
Second? Have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Okay, we, any abstentions? So that is a 4-1 vote on that item. So then next we will move on to direction on future agenda items. Oops, oh, thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to our regular agenda. So the first item on our regular agenda is the, maybe it should be the Measure S Annual Report and Letter from the Oversight Committee for fiscal year 2021-22. Do we still have the tail end of G? No, we are done with G. Okay. Thank you for pointing out, that was a typo that continued in.
Well, I know they straggle through because it takes us a while to kind of, okay.
What's that? Yeah, it's on. Okay, I'll scoot closer. So yes, we were done with Measure G in the last fiscal year, and that was just a typo. We are now, for this fiscal year, only looking at Measure S. So, good evening, Mayor, council members, microphone, fellow staff, and members of our community online. This evening we'll be going over the summary of Measure S funds for the city, covering fiscal year 2021, 2022, as was presented to the Oversight Committee last Tuesday, February 21st. So for this overview, we want to go over a summary of Measure S, a snapshot of the funds received, and then detail on what those funds were allocated to by their function, and then concluding with the financial audit. I'm going to have to point it towards it. No, I think our battery's stabbed, maybe. It's okay. So what is Measure S, why does the city have it? So Measure S represents a voter-approved 1% add-on sales tax that passed in the November 2020 election, almost by a 75% approval. So Measure S was primarily an extension of the already existing Measure G, which was a replacement of the 1/2% tax, which was Measure A. So to continue to show what was voted on and the approval, we continue to provide the voter pamphlet within the packet page, oh, sorry, you don't grab the packet page, but it's included within the report, because we want to make sure that's continued in there, what was actually approved by the community. So with this 1% add-on tax, the city receives these funds directly through the state, and they continue to fund critical essential city services. And these funds then are also protected from state and other pieces because it comes directly through the state but to us, because they are voted on by our voters for us to have here for our resources. So this one, see if this works, yay, okay. This 1% tax, though it sounds like a lot, it contributes almost 25% of the city's general fund revenues, and is just one piece of the sales tax that is applied to taxable purchases in the city. So like you know, not all sales are taxable. Go get your Starbucks or some other items, and they are subject to tax. But those that are subject to tax, 6% of that is dedicated and goes straight back to the state. 0.25% goes to the county transportation fund. 1% goes to our Bradley Burns tax, which does come back to the city. And then the remaining are special add-on taxes, which include Measure S, but also things like the Smart Train Measure Q, Open Space Measure F, and multiple others which are outlined in Packet Page 43. So as presented herein, the measure tax revenues brought in, the tax revenues that are brought in have continued to increase over the prior years, with a total for fiscal year 21-22 of almost $3.2 million, an increase of $227,000 or 7% over the prior year. What I kind of like looking at is that really, per quarter, that's an additional $56,000 that's brought in on average. So as mentioned previously, not all sales taxes are taxable, but what our current tax base is made up of is primarily due to construction, food and drug, vehicles, fuel service stations, and of course, the county pool. So for the 22-23 budget year, which we just had our mid-year evaluation report that was brought to council on the February 14th, we do anticipate sales tax for Measure S to have a small decline to just over $3 million for this current fiscal year. So we are expecting that to decrease. So how are those revenues spent? Consistent with how we budget, we separate them by type, which is operating and capital. So for the current fiscal year, because of the five-year capital improvement plan, we were able to use almost 49% of the Measure S funds to support our city improvements, and even secure some grant matching funds like the Quick Strike project that's coming down the line, which we'll discuss in a moment. Overall, we do try to balance that allocation between operations and capital. And again, the variations between the years are due to capital project delays or other items that are being placed in hold. So the other way we break down our budget is by function, or what we do is the department. So for the purpose of Measure S, this is what we call programs. So for the measure, there are five major programs that are generated and supported by this measure, and those are public safety programs, streets, sidewalk and storm drain programs, park and landscape, public building, and recreation. Note that this chart just represents the total percentage per program for the year. So while we have some dramatic changes in percentages, the picture of the dollars really doesn't do it justice. Just because a percentage decreases doesn't mean the dollar amount allocated to that program decreased. So you want to really look at the dollar amount allocation, which is on Packet Page 51. So for public safety, for the fiscal year, and again, along the lines with the strategic objectives that council laid out for the year, there was a total of just over $1 million that was expended in this category, and they were primarily used to implement things like the safe team, preserve operations including dispatch and traffic safety, replacing a vehicle with the city's first all-electric patrol vehicle, and enhanced traffic safety projects which include the crosswalk at Benson Lane and Laguna Creek, the sign controller at Old Redwood High in Valparaiso, and also the video, advanced video detection program for the vehicles and bicycles that was put on the Old Redwood Highway. So next, for streets, making sure I'm on the right slide. There was a total of $1.3 million used both, again, for a combination of operations, like a full-time engineer, as well as a plethora of capital projects primarily made up of the completion of the 2022 streets maintenance and paving and striping, the design and initial pre-construction for the slurry seal and sidewalk improvements projects, the design and construction of the 2021 streets construction and improvement projects, which was all that West Side work was done, continued design and coordination with the state on the 2020 street construction improvement Quick Strike project, which has another name, and you guys approved that the other day, and continued rollout of the Gateway signage program, Wayfinding signage at that time. Next, to park and landscaping program, which used $176,000, is primarily funds the cost of a full-time maintenance worker, designed for the Kattati Park, which is now in construction, partial operations for the maintenance programs at Vronda-Fallette Ranch. And we did make sure that was an upgrade and a request from the Oversight Committee that we include contract services breakdown, so it's also included within the packet and the new for this report this year, and that's included in Packet Page 54. Next is the public building program for $310,000. It's primarily focused on operations for maintenance of the city buildings, which are made up of City Hall, the Civic Center, Police Department, Train Depot, and the Public Works corp yard. Additionally, this measure helps cover some of the inspection and code enforcement contracts and finished design for the window replacement project, which is still underway here at City Hall, and also pieces of that finished construction on the rear roof and Civic, at the Civic Center, excuse me. Last but not least is the recreation program, which was brought back to the city because of Measure G at that time, and continues, so Measure S continues to be, to fully fund all of the recreation programs. This includes all the staff, and a manager, a coordinator, part-time seasonal staff, and camps, the camps programs, everything that they're facilitating. So recreation also facilitates all the facilities, management, rentals, and those programs as well. And also in light of everything that they do, they also are a main component of our social media and community outreach program, so it would not be possible. So with all these expenses and revenues that come in, they are subject to our independent audit, where Bedawee and Associates reviews the consolidated financial statements, as well as the allocation of the Measure S revenues to these programs. There was no opinion, we had a clean opinion for the audit for this fiscal year, and we do include that as it is presented within our annual financial statements, also within the Measure S report. And that's included on Packet Page 56. So that's really a summary of the Measure S report that was provided to the Oversight Committee, and they did also include a letter for you showing that they had reviewed these and find them consistent with their due diligence, what it needed to be used for. And so it really is for you to accept and file their letter. Questions?
I just had a question on the public safety. The advanced video detection camera, do you know how that's been used? Is there any examples of how the film from the detection camera's been used?
So we could definitely provide some more insight on that.
Yeah, Craig may have more background on this, but the advanced detection isn't, it's just to, it basically just looks for vehicles entering intersections that may not be stopping. It's like advanced dilemma detection. So like if, for an example, if someone is coming to an intersection and the light's turning red, but the camera detects that they're not slowing down, it'll pause on turning the other leg's green, so you don't have cars in the intersection that would collide. It's that kind of thing. It doesn't record anything, it's just managing the traffic approaching the intersection.
So doesn't it record like their license plate and then send them a bill or something, or violation?
It doesn't do the red light run. I mean, what we have certainly doesn't do that. I don't know if some additional evolution of equipment might do that, but ours is managing the, just managing the control of the intersection.
Okay. Okay, and I just thought it was interesting, it said video detection camera, so I thought it was recording or doing other follow-up.
Yeah, I mean, besides the dilemma detection, which, you know, like I said, looks ahead to try to avoid collisions and intersections, the other thing it does, which I think it does better than the, what we had been doing, was detection through loops in the asphalt. So, you know, when you pave a new road, or even if you cut one in, they basically, the old style is you put these inductive loops in the ground, and then when something metallic has iron in it, like a car drives over it, it disrupts the field magnetic field, and it can tell there's a car there, right? But when you deal with smaller objects like bicycles, it's not as good at detecting that. So, so these are much better at detecting things like bicycles waiting to cross the intersection.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I wanted to, so I'm trying to figure out how to make this public in the right way. So we had a, there's a comment that is actually in the packet on Page 73 from Lori Alderman, and I had responded to her asking to clarify the issue, and she did. I'm presuming that this will be added to the agenda? No, her further comments?
I mean, it's something the council can discuss if we want to add it to their Measure S report.
Okay, well, I'm just going to go ahead and at least read what I responded to her, because when she sent the original email, it was to all of us, but of course, I can't reply to all of us because that's a Brown violation. So right now, I'd like to go ahead and just read my quick response, it's only like a paragraph, so that we can all discuss it if anyone wants to. So I just said, "Hi Lori, thank you for your comments. I've spoken with Damian, and he'll remove the language referring to COVID as a reason for making Measure S permanent. While I understand that will not address all of your concerns reflected in your message," which we will include if everyone agrees, "I hope it will show our new council's goodwill, and I'm hoping that our future interactions will continue to come from a place of presuming positive intent, both yours and mine. Thank you again, Kay." And then she responded, "Thank you, Kay. I do think that it is a positive first step. I do realize the benefits of having a new makeup of the council and their willingness to change the status quo. Sincerely, Lori Alderman."
Okay, so you made a mention of changing something, so would you like to share with the council what you would like to change?
Yes.
So we can discuss that?
Yes, so on Packet Page 41, let me see, the last paragraph says, "In 2020, with the continued economic crisis around the COVID-19..." continued economic crisis around the COVID-19 epidemic, the city once again took blah, blah, blah. So all we're asking, or what Damian and I discussed, was to just remove the around the COVID-19 epidemic, because it wasn't, that isn't, you know, completely accurate, that there were fears about what would happen, but then we ended up getting funds, and it was, it was not the issue that everyone feared it would be. And so just to remove those words around the COVID-19 epidemic, but leave the rest of it as it is, is the proposal.
So that is what is being recommended?
I thought we were still in questions, and I'm waiting for a little comment.
Okay.
That's why I'm holding off.
We will, no, that's fine. We'll, yeah, you can write. That's fine.
I do have a question.
Perfect.
I just had a question about the, maybe this is a question for Damian.
He seems occupied.
I think he's talking to.
Yeah. Dame, just you, manager, a bit. I had a question about the, the, how does this work technically? If this report was approved by the oversight committee, can we make changes to it? Or since they've, I just want to know how that, how that works.
I had the same question.
Yeah, this, so, and this report is a, the report itself is a receive and file to the oversight committee and the council. I would say if the, if the edit had anything to do with the numbers or how it was used, I'd say, no, you can't do that. But this is just background, and I think if you wanted to make a small change to it, it's probably okay.
I believe the words you used was wordsmithing.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if you want to, if there's something along the lines of what Councilmember Rivers said, it's probably fine if the council wants to make it.
Thank you for that answer. Okay. Any more question? All right. And I will open this up for public comment, and there is no one here. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. So Ben, you're up again.
Well, Vice Mayor Sparks's comment reminded me that this is a report of the Measure S Oversight Committee, not our report. And so it is a little, I'm not quite sure what that would mean for us to make change in their report. It's, you know, the Measure S requires them to issue us a report and us to receive it. That being said, I don't have any particular issue with that change, although the sentence as written does not say that due to the economic crisis around COVID-19, the city took the measure to the community. I read it as even though we were in the midst of an economic crisis, due to, definitely due to COVID-19, drastically reduced employment during that time, people still voted for it. So to me, it's actually important context to when it went to the voters and the fact that even in the midst of that crisis, voters voted almost 75% to approve it. So if we, like, I don't, it would be fine with me to take it out, but also you could rework it a little so it couldn't be read as because, because of the economic crisis, we took it to the voters, which it doesn't say, but I could see how you could read it that way. Next.
And Mayor, can I just make a clarification? The report that Lori is suggesting a change to was prepared by staff, reviewed by the oversight committee, and then the oversight committee produced a one-pager. So technically, it's not their report. They used it to produce their report.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I, I mean, I read the, I read the sentence a little bit differently, that, you know, there was economic, not that, and not that we were in economic crisis, that it was just in general, there was concern of continued economic crisis in the world because of COVID-19 in 2020. So I guess it's how you read the sentence. It didn't say the city is in, which was what was implied that the city was in, and that is not what that sentence says to me. But it's not worth it for me to, you know, die on the sword for, for that. So Sylvia, what do you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think all the previous paragraphs kind of speak to what the issue was, that there was concerns, you know, with the budget. So, so I can see where it can be read either way. You know, I don't have a problem, you know, taking it out or leaving it in, because I feel the other paragraphs kind of give that explanation.
I mean, when history, as you pointed out, Ben, you know, 10 years from now, when people wonder what was happening in 2020, it does provide a perspective. Laura?
Yeah, I think it, I'm okay with it either way. I can see how it could be interpreted that, the way that Ms. Alderman's comments described. So I'd be okay with removing it just for clarity.
And you, you want it removed. Am I putting words in your mouth or?
No, I mean, I, I feel like it could be removed. Just the idea of wordsmithing, you know, and I understand for the historic content, context, I mean, if, if that's really felt that's important, maybe if it just replaced around with and, it might remove the idea of the causal relationship between the two. So with the continued economic crisis and the COVID-19 epidemic, the city once again took, I think it still reads that that's the reason why. So, so never mind. Yeah, I do think it needs, I think it should probably be removed.
Well, so who would, we have to receive and file this. We have to make a motion. So who would like to make a motion, and then we'll see where that goes.
Okay, so I move that we remove the words around the COVID-19 epidemic from packet page 41.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And those four words, staff, can we remove those four words as unanimously voted? Okay. Good job, guys. Next. We will move on to resolution of opposition to initiative number 21-0042A1, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Hmm. So do we have a staff report on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it sounds like something you need to vote yes on, you know?
It sounds like.
All right. So on January 4th of this, of last year, sorry, the California Business Roundtable Group, they're a, basically an interest group representing businesses in California, certain businesses in California. They filed this Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, and then on February 1st of this year, the measure qualified for the November 2024 ballot. Cal cities, along with the broad coalition of local governments, labor, and public safety leaders, infrastructure advocates, businesses, and business, and other businesses, I guess presumably that aren't part of the California Business Roundtable, strongly oppose this initiative. And local government revenue raising authorities currently substantially restricted by state statute and constitutional provisions, including Prop 13, Prop 218, and Prop 26. And this measure, this initiative, if approved by voters, would add and expand restrictions on voters and local government tax and fee authority. So as a little bit of background, the California Business Roundtable Group is the, is the same group, if you've, if the name sounds familiar, it's the same group just a couple of years ago, I guess maybe four years ago now, did something very similar and was running it up to the ballot, but it was, they were using it as leverage with the state legislature. Basically, it's kind of like, how do I, the threat, like kind of the nuclear option threat to try to get the state legislature to do something. And four years ago, it was a soda tax that they were opposed to. There's some large beverage manufacturers that are part of the California Business Roundtable that didn't like cities imposing soda taxes, which is starting to gain traction in the state for, you know, funding health programs and that sort of thing. So as a compromise to get them to pull it off the ballot, the legislature basically prevented, put in place new law to prevent cities from passing soda, the so-called soda tax, at least until I think 2025 or so. There is a sunset on it. And then they went away for a bit, and now they're back. And so it's still unclear at this point if this is something that they just want to use as leverage for the state legislature ultimately, or if, or if it's going to really end up on the ballot. But it's probably going to be a last minute game of chicken like it was last time. In the meantime, though, Cal cities, as I mentioned, is trying to put together a strong opposition to it to hopefully, if it gets onto the ballot, get it defeated at the ballot. And so in terms of some details as to what it does, is it dramatically changes how fees and taxes and penalties would be raised, and rents would be determined in the state of California. There's, there's hundreds of local tax measures that were approved in 2022 that likely would not comply with this initiative. There's, so this would go into, if it gets approved by voters in 2024, it would be retroactive to January of 2022. So anybody that's done anything since then is going to basically have, like, if you've passed a tax measure, you'd have 12 months basically to get it repassed with the new rules. Otherwise, it just sunsets out and goes away. So that puts a lot of cities and districts at risk to potentially lose some very important revenue that their voters had previously approved. We don't currently at this point have any taxes that would be subject to that clawback, but there certainly are other things in the future that this would impact us around, certainly like, you know, business taxes or like TOT taxes, if we were ever to change that. For example, our TOT tax is pretty low relative to others in the county, but it's been sort of a academic question because we don't have hotel. But in the future, that could be a very relevant conversation, and this would make that much harder if passed. It does add some new language, like for fines and penalties, for example. So they become taxes unless they're approved through some undefined and ambiguous adjudicatory due process, which nobody knows what that is, but that's what lawyers are for, to fight about it for a couple of years, and they'll eventually figure it out, I guess, with the courts. But anyways, it's just, you know, it'll be a mess for a bit if this gets approved. And then they also made some other, they seemingly small but very important changes to like fees and charges where the burden to prove a fee or charge does not exceed actual cost, which is how it is now, to clear and convincing evidence, whatever that means. So again, another, I'm sure, you know, attorney extravaganza to figure that one out. And then, and then lastly, for like rental of state property or local property, government property, we currently have to meet a reasonableness, or I'm sorry, we currently are allowed to do it through market rate. So for example, we're renting out a piece of property, we could rent it at market rate. If we're, you know, like, you would assume that we should be able to, because that seems to be the best use of public property, is to rent it at market rate as opposed to some other rate, unless there's some overriding consideration. But they introduce a new term here called reasonable. So the, it wouldn't be market-based anymore, it'd be reasonable, and that would be some other test to figure out what a reasonable rent would be. So, and then, second to last, they prohibit fees on development-based vehicle miles traveled, which is the new SEQA threshold for greenhouse gas, for greenhouse gas reduction for developments. So previously, just for those that don't know, previously we would analyze SEQA based on level of service. So we'd be looking at roadways and intersections and their level of service, and that recently changed under SEQA. So now, as far as SEQA goes, we, we look at vehicles, vehicle miles traveled. The point being that we're trying to look at, look at projects in a way that reduce the amount of vehicle miles. So that is more greenhouse, to reduce greenhouse gases ultimately is the point of it. And then any taxes or fees that were adopted after January 1, as I mentioned, of 2022, that don't comply with these new rules would be void unless reenacted. And so you could, you know, safely assume that a lot of the fees and charges that we have in our current fee schedule would probably be void, and we'd have to look at redoing a substantial portion of them. And I think with that, I'll just, I'll just leave it there. There is some, there's some background in the financial considerations, but the main impact to us immediately would be more of our, our fee schedules would be immediately upended. But longer term, there's definitely potential for impact on things, as I mentioned, such as, you know, the TOT, if we were to change that, and other things that we want to do in the future. And so I'll just leave it there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Damian, was there anything in there when it says prohibit fees on development based on vehicle miles traveled? Did they say what, to use? Are we to go back to level of service, or are they being silent?
I, I guess that's the assumption, is that you go back to the level of service standard if, but adopt it under the, under the new rules in this new paradigm, which by itself could be considered a tax unless it, which would then be, have to be approved by the voters unless there's some, you know, adjudicatory processes mentioned that would, that's not been defined to do it. So I guess the takeaway is it's just going to be kind of a mess, kind of a train wreck for a bit until it all gets sorted out. And then even after that, there's probably going to be some serious financial implications for cities across the state.
And what about like water and sewer and garbage rates? Because those periodically go up too. Do they have to be voted upon with this? Is it clear?
It's not totally clear to me, but certain, but certainly what is clear is that certain water and sewer charges would be subject to this new law, yeah, if it were approved by voters.
So it could impact service if we can't raise the rates and we can't financially support something. You could be without water, or be without sewer, or not have your garbage picked up if you can't change the rates, right?
Right. I think the primary thing, it's not really trying to get after utility fees and the typical user fees that we've been charging for a long time. But what it does do is it changes the, the burden of proof that an agency would have to demonstrate that the, that the costs are reasonable. That might have a marginal impact, but most of the time on sewer and water, it's pretty clear that the costs are, are what the costs are and that they're reasonable estimates. So it's probably going to have a limited impact on, on utility fees. I haven't thoroughly studied the initiative, but that's my initial view.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's impact fees primarily that are going to get hit with that. And then in terms of the service fees, there's a different standard, and it's hard to know exactly how much that would impact us. But certainly if it were, I, I don't know that the, you know, we charge for service fees for existing customers would be as dramatically as affected as sending it to the voters for approving it, because that would be totally unworkable. Not, not that this is totally reasonable either, but I,
Right.
I didn't read it that way. I think it was more impact fees.
Okay. Because on, on top of not only just sending it to the voters, it's sending it to the voters and getting a two-thirds approval, which is almost impossible.
Unless it's Measure S, which got a 75% approval.
Yeah.
Sorry. Shameless plug for that one.
I'll start this. And Sylvia, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. And questions? Laura, questions? Kay, you're on.
So I think mine is quick. I'm just, in the final, the be it further resolved, it says that we'll be joining the no on initiative coalition. And I just want to confirm what the responsibilities of joining the coalition are. Does it just mean that we're voting no, or is, are we actually joining something?
So this, this resolution and the accompanying letter are going to, going to Cal cities. And so Cal cities would list us as a city that passed a resolution opposing it. That's what that means.
Okay, so it isn't some kind of campaign or anything like that?
Not that we're actively participating in it. Cal cities might be, but we're not.
Okay, I'm not even saying we necessarily shouldn't. I just wanted to clarify. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Laura?
I just noticed.
That's okay.
I just noticed a typo in that "Be it resolved", it says "the state and direct staff", which should be "and".
And it needs a comma before that "and" as well.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry, where were we?
The last "be it further resolved" on packet page 88. The word "a-n" should have a "d" on it in the third line. Infrastructure groups throughout the state, comma, and direct. Yeah.
Okay.
Did you get "and" comma? Okay. All right. Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, then I will open this up for public comment.
Mayor Harvey, we have no Zoom attendees, so that'll end public comment.
So, and there's no one left in the audience? Then I will bring it back to the council and would be looking for motion.
I'm happy to move a resolution opposing the California Business Roundtable Initiative Number 210042A1, Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act.
I'd like to second that, please.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? I didn't hear any. Then that passes. No abstentions. That passes unanimously. So with that, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have, we're still a little ways off, but April 22, we're doing a drug take-back event. This is prescription drugs. If people have things around their house that they want to get rid of and obviously not put it in the toilet or the garbage can. You can always come to the police station because we have a bin in there, but we also do these big take-back events. And so our next one's April 22, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be more information as we get closer. So it's also a DiTab Challenge Month. It's EPA Water Sense Program's Fix a Leak Week, March 20 through 26. So coming up next month. And this is all about toilets. So toilets are often silent wasters of water, right? And they can waste hundreds of gallons of water per day, making the toilet one of the number-one reasons for high water bills. And if anybody wants to participate in this challenge, we have Di Tabs in the City Manager's office. So anybody can go by and pick up some Di Tablets to put in the tank, and that'll show you if you have any leaks in your toilet. We also still have, by the way, on a totally different subject, we still have compost pails. So if anyone wants compost pails, please come by. Again, the City Manager's office, you can get both, a Di Tab. And it's almost Easter, you can use the other Di Tab for dyeing eggs if you want, or you can dye.
Hopefully, not the toilet.
Or not. Anyway, I have a link, we'll put a link online for where people can sign up and be entered to win a $25 gift card. Also, Admin Services is going to be doing some financial trivia soon. Yeah, so get out your pocket protectors because we got some.
Do I have to get my budget back out? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess a green visor is not the pocket protector. That's Craig or me. Anyway, so financial trivia, we're doing that through social media pretty soon. We're going to be doing three weeks of it. So look for that. And each week, a lucky winner will get a gift card, too. On projects, so we have, we do have an emergency sewer repair that's about to start on Commerce. We found a sewer pipe that had failed, and so we're going to be in Commerce just repairing that part of the sewer main. I think tomorrow it's supposed to start. Yeah, so there'll be some traffic detours and things going up. So just don't be surprised. That just is coming up quickly. And we also have the Civic Center window replacement project. In four to six weeks, the windows should arrive, and then we're going to start replacing those windows. We still have to do the stucco, of course, over here to finish City Hall. Katati Park refurbishment is going on. You know, it's delayed by rain right now, but pending sort of rain delays. We are currently looking at delivery of the shade structure and play equipment, hopefully in March at some point, and installed at some point in April. Pathways to be installed in March, weather permitting. And then the restroom is expected to be delivered in late July at this moment. So anyway, by the middle of the summer, hopefully, that project will be largely done. West Sierra and La Plaza Road reconstruction, that one is expected, the council approved that. It's expected to start in late March. And as well as the street reconstruction project centered around Myrtle is also expected to begin in late March. We currently have out to bid some work for repainting the exterior. So after they finish the stucco, we've got to go around and just repaint City Hall and the Civic Center, the community center. And we have to replace some trim and stuff in the back. But that's going to be the last bit of work here to wrap up what we've been doing here at City Hall. And then the housing element. So the council can expect to see that on March 6. So when we have the Joint Planning Commission Council meeting, we plan to come back with that housing element for a review. And that same night, we'll be doing the Land Use 101 presentation. So it'll be a busy night that night. This Saturday, March 4, we have a new workshop being offered at the Verona Flitty Ranch where you can come paint plant pots and plant a pot and take it home. So it's kind of like an introduction to gardening type class. You can sign up online for that on our website. We're also taking registrations for bunny grams where you can send your loved ones a basket full of goodies, stuffed eggs, candies, treats, and more. Sign up early because we're going to quickly run out of baskets. And then we're also doing our annual bunny brunch and egg hunt, taking place on April 1, Saturday. Registration is open already and is filling up. There's two sessions at 9:00 and 9:45. And this is scrambled eggs, pancakes, sausage, fruit, drinks, and egg hunt, and a chance to visit and take photos of the bunny. So if anyone's interested in that, sign up quickly because that does sell out fast. And spring break camp registration is open. If you want or need child, your children, to go to camp for spring break when school's closed, we have two camps offered this year. We have the Camp Katati Spring Break Camp and the Spring Break Spanish Camp, which is all about insects, which I think that's correct. Summer camp registration is also open. So we're hoping, we're hosting Camp Katati again all summer. And we also have a variety of specialty camps, including Spanish camp, multiple children's theater camps, farm camp, gymnastics camp. And you can sign up for all this on the city website, katatice.org. And it just keeps on going, but I'll leave it there for tonight because the rest is far enough out that we can talk about it later. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Kay, do you have a question? That's okay. Go ahead. He always look at me like.
Well, I want to ask, we had talked a little bit about this, about the creek cleanups. And from our discussion, it only happens once a year. And I've heard from quite a few residents that, you know, have gone out on their own and, you know, cleaned it up themselves and that, you know, there aren't really garbage cans for them to throw stuff in. And if it only happens once a year, that's a long time to leave, you know, debris and trash and stuff there. So I'm just wondering if it's possible to do it, like, I don't know, once a quarter or something, rather than just once a year? This has come from packet page, what is this? 68, if that's needed.
So once a year, there's a, generally, I believe during Creek Week, we do a big kind of cleanup event. But I'd have to look into, you know, what else is possible outside of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a question about the emergency sewer repair. First I'm hearing about it, so I'm just curious. Is that something that we, remember we were having cameras go down through the sewage pipes? Is this something that sort of showed up on there as a minor problem that escalated? Or was it just a complete surprise, or what happened?
So there's, this is my understanding, and Craig can clarify if I'm missing something here. But there's a couple of places in the sewer system where there's, you know, we just know that they're problematic, and so we do more regular cleanings of. And Public Works crew, I mean, this all happened very quickly. So we were, Public Works was out there just, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and they noticed that they're getting some gravel up, which was unusual when they were doing the cleaning.
There was what?
Gravel.
Okay.
Gravel in the sewer. And so we contracted with a camera company. This wasn't one of the previously videoed segments, as I understand it. But they went in there, or maybe it had, maybe it had been. Oh, so it was recently failed then. So it had been previously camered, but they camered it again, and they saw that it had failed, actually, between just, I don't know, a year ago and today. And so they quickly just mobilized a contractor on call to just get in there and fix that part of the sewer.
Yeah. Well, great job on catching it so quickly.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Then we will move on to city council member reports. Sylvie, do you have anything?
Sure. February 16, I went to Representative Mike Thompson's meet and greet. I saw Laura there. Let me see. After our team building meeting on Friday, I went, I was invited to the Sonoma Dems crab beat at the Vets. So that was really nice. Met Representative Adam Schiff and State Controller Malia Cohen that was also there. This morning, I had the most amazing time with amazing constituents at Monte Vista Elementary School, and I read stories for the Reading Across America. So I actually taught them a little land use and zoning through the little house. And because they were asking questions about why all the skyscrapers were being built around the little house, you know. So we talked about land use and little zoning and things. And they were first graders, so it was a great time this morning.
That's great. Thank you. Ben?
At a recent Russian River Watershed Association Board meeting, I agreed to serve as this year's vice chair of the association.
Yay.
And they elected me amazingly.
Laura?
Yes, I attended the meet and greet of Mike Thompson's office, and I heard that Katerina led them on some kind of whirlwind tour of Katati. So the entire Washington staff came through Katati and visited downtown and saw our little community. They all had great comments about how much they loved Katati. Let's see, I attended the Continuum of Care Board meeting last week. Jackie Elward wasn't able to attend. A couple interesting things that I learned there, that the Housing Heroes Program that the county is doing has a target of, they're trying to reach out and find 100 new landlords to work with people who need housing placement. So they're working on that right now. We looked at, the Continuum of Care looked at funding proposals for Community Development Block Grant, COVID funding streams, and a couple of other funding streams. A lot of proposals had come through, and we were asked to just kind of look at them and give comments. And I learned that some of these county funding streams, we're actually not allowed to apply the priorities in the Continuum of Care Strategic Plan to the applications that come through this other funding stream. All of the criteria for those homelessness funding streams are in the county's consolidated plan, which will be updated for, I believe, 2024 to 2025. So there was some discussion at the meeting of, well, perhaps we need to work on getting the consolidated plan to align with the strategic plan. If the Continuum of Care is supposed to be directing funding for, this is my opinion, directing funding for homelessness and having this coherent plan, it didn't make much sense to me that that couldn't be considered in making funding decisions. So it's just an interesting learning experience. It's all very complicated. I also learned that there's committees, there are subcommittees of the Continuum of Care, and they're encouraging alternates to serve on those subcommittees. So I'm going to be looking at the schedules and seeing if I want to apply for any of those. I attended the 2x2x2x2 education meeting, which is, they're looking to add representatives, perhaps. I think they're going to look into adding people from SRJC. So it might soon be the 2x2x2x2x2, which I think we should just call 32. But we are going to start rotating the meetings. So instead of always meeting at Roner Park, we'll have a meeting at SSU, a meeting at School District, a meeting here. Hopefully, we can bring everyone on a little field trip of the Verona Flitty Ranch because they were real interested in seeing that. And then we heard a lot from SSU about a new teacher residency, one-year teacher residency program that they're going to have, where somebody would shadow a teacher, basically be a student teacher for an entire year. And there was some discussion of whether we could potentially work together on maybe developing curriculum for students at the Verona Flitty Ranch. I think it was all very speculative at the moment, just an idea that we talked about a little bit. And I got the social media post about the pickleball, and I signed up for pickleball. Thank you.
Yay. Kay?
Okay, so I was also at the 2x2x2, you know, et cetera, meeting.
A bunch of twos.
Yeah, you know, times two, times two, times two. And it was another one of the things that they talked about that I just wanted to bring up was the Social Awareness for Youth, which is a human trafficking organization that came up in conversation. And they gave us postcards about it. But I thought it was great that we have it here, and I wasn't aware of it before. And then the day before that, I had a meeting for the library, which I was very excited about. And I guess the main thing, well, two things. One is March 18, at the Roner Park Katati Library, they're going to, they have UC Master Gardeners coming in to teach about container gardening. And I think that's kind of awesome, and I'm totally planning to go. So that's at 9:30 on Saturday, March 18. And then the other thing that I thought was really cool is when I brought up the idea of having a library in Katati, instead of everyone scoffing or saying, "What?", you know, whatever, they were all like, "Ooh, yeah, how would we do that?", right? So I was very, very encouraged by the positive response to having a physical library here in Katati. And I just want to own up right now. The next Sonoma County Library meeting is actually tomorrow, which is my wife's 50th birthday. And we had already planned dinner, so I'm going to miss my first meeting, and I'm very sorry about that. But, you know, family first, right?
Family first.
That's my report. Thank you.
I hear you. Thank you. Thanks for the reports. So I thought our team building Friday night was good. Everyone, I think, had a very, yeah, looks like thumbs up. I think we learned a lot. That was good. I attended on Friday an interesting meeting that Kaiser put on about homelessness. And what struck me is when I get the stuff, I want to make sure that I get it to you, Loria, because I'm not sure why that stuff isn't kind of circled through the Continuum of Care. But they did a presentation, and there were people from all the different state levels. And they talked about some of the programs that they're doing with this. And Damian, you can correct me if I get it messed up. But between the county and Santa Rosa on kind of helping with that math problem, as they called it, which is always the financing and trying to work through some of that. But they had some interesting stuff. But I thought that that might be, you know, it feels like it's kind of Continuum of Care-type stuff with homelessness. So as soon as I get that, I'll get that to you. And then today, I attended my orientation for LAFCO. And we have quite a full LAFCO agenda that is tomorrow. So I'll attend my first LAFCO meeting there. So that is all I have this time. Damian went to the Waste Management Agency meeting for me. So I believe they discussed their work plan.
Can I ask a question of Mayor Harvey?
Yeah.
On that meeting with Kaiser, you had mentioned something Friday, I was trying to understand about parking lots?
Yeah, they, one of the things that, that they discussed is a experiment that they're doing with putting in less parking. And so they're calling it an experiment, and I'm like, oh, okay, well, then what happens if the experiment doesn't work? But basically, I don't have the, I won't remember the exact numbers, but let's say there's 70 units, they're only putting in, you know, like 58 parking spots, and hoping that, you know, that will work, or, or not to kind of, I guess, as one of the people said, push people in that direction. So, and, you know, I asked about, well, do you have like plans for, you know, letting people know ahead of time or something like that? And they said, no, we're just, you know, going to see how that works. So they're just trying to, an approach of, well, let's just build it that way and, and kind of see what happens, and, you know? But I, you know, couldn't get any good advice for, well, what if that doesn't happen? But I suppose maybe, you know, it will work. If it doesn't, then I suppose they'll come up with some. So that was interesting, but yeah, there. That's okay.
Okay, the, the one thing I forgot to is because of this new amazing library meeting, I can no longer have coffee with Kay on the third Tuesdays of the month, so I have moved it to the third Wednesday of the month. So the next one will be March 22 from 6 to 8 at Redwood Cafe, so come have potato skins with me.
All right. Okay, then, let's see, where are we at? Lost my place. So we are now at public comment on any non-action agenda items?
Mayor Harvey, there are still no Zoom attendees.
Okay, and we have lost our audience here. So then we will move on to information received after the agenda was posted, and we did receive one letter from Jenny Leicher that we discussed, and she discussed tonight. So, anything else for the good of the order? All right, then we will call ourselves adjourned at 7:29. Thank you, everyone.